We'll go ahead and do a vote call.
And we're gonna, Jose, we'll be taking minutes. We don't have enough to do for the civilians out just for that public comment.
Okay, we're going to do a vote call. Councilmember Sonja?
President.
Councilmember Samra?
President.
Councilmember Feliz Rodriguez?
President.
Councilmember David Nenosa?
President.
Mayor Alvarado Nenosa?
President.
Can, uh, can our flagellages, please stand for flagellages. On two, our flagellages.
To the right of the United States of America and to the right of the Constitution, one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the other council?
The best interaction council.
No objections to the agenda? Okay, citizens' comments. As special members of the public commission to address the city council, any matter on the agenda may use at this time. According to the provisions of the California government code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. A woman at six thirty-four?
Catherine, we are gonna have the item, if you want to give the public comment, there's only those, the closed session and then the open session item. We're gonna open up the public comment during the open session after we give the staff report. That may give more information than if you give it now. So for that one, we'll wait there. Do you have other public comments on the closed session?
Yes, I do. Catherine Shaw, Vegas P.O., Box 163, Livingston. First off, when it comes to employment contracts and other contracts, if there's one thing I've heard over and over again when it comes to employment contracts or other contracts for that matter, it is something that goes like this. It doesn't matter if we give them a three-year contract. We can change our minds and, and change or cancel the contract if we want to. Back in September of 2012, when the new public works director was hired, one of the main reasons given for that position was that it would allow the city to run the wastewater treatment plant in-house. And you, Mr. Mayor, said that it was important because it would save us over $500,000. My question is this: if we are really saving that much, and will be saving that much, can you explain to me why you're even thinking about letting another city employee go?
I'll let her come in. We had another closed session, we don't have that, and I recommend that the council discuss it at this point in the session. Thank you. Anyone else? No sign?
Just get your name and address.
Can you move up your mic, I want to look at your mic better here.
I speak a little louder than most of you guys.
All right, I'm over there.
I'll do it. Okay, I'm not sure if Mike's Berry, their food chain, or Street Livingston, I'm not sure if this is the right time to comment on, but I wanted to make a comment about the proposed warrant for him. Is this the right time?
We are gonna open it up after you give the staff report. That way I provide a more informed comment. Are you doing that?
How often is that? Just because I gotta meet somebody to shop this afternoon, that's all. I don't want to miss my opportunity.
You, you want to go ahead and give it, then we'll open it up again.
Okay, cool. My whole thing is this, um, and I've been heartened this for a long time. If other towns around us, other cities, are allowing whatever businesses to come in, I honestly think that Livingston needs to, like, really open their mind and say, "Why not?" Why not? If, if other cities are, are able to do it, we can. We can set the rules, parameters, whatever you want to do, the code enforcement, we can do it. Um, I'm gonna tell you right now, like I, I, I told a lot of people, I had a conversation with a lot of people, there's two reasons people come to Livingston besides work. It's called Gino's Pizza and Mike's Berry's Gun Shop. Nobody comes here to shop for liberty. Maybe a couple of people come a little more on it, but past that, we don't have a draw of people. We don't have a reason to come here, that's what people say. Okay, several of you might have been born and raised here, me, I have, all right? We've been raised to leave Livingston to go get shoes, to go get whatever we need. And while we're getting our shoes, we might as well get our corn or whatever the hell else we, heck else we need, sorry. Walmart, I hope will be a learning lesson for Livingston for the rest of our lives. Um, I'm not big on Walmart, but that would have made a reason for a lot of people to come here. Somehow it didn't happen. Big business, they're finicky, okay? I don't know. I'll probably never know for a real reason. Uh, or you guys, okay? But little things like this, these guys, wherever they are, if they're willing to invest their money and time in Livingston, I think it's your duty to give a chance. Because they're gonna have to follow some laws. And once again, this is a tobacco product, it's on marijuana, as far as I know. So tobacco products regulated by the state pretty heavily, ATF as well. I know, I have a tobacco license. So anyways, I think that's my three minutes, but guys, you know, kinda do the right thing here. We don't need another Mexican restaurant, we need some diversity. I don't know if all you guys know or not, but the hydroponic store has left shop. They've left Livingston. They got a nice sign on their door, not that any of you are crazy about it, neither am I, but they're gone. There's a nice note on their door that says, "We moved to a bigger shop in Merced." So they, they gave up on us. End of story.
Thank you. Close session's coming at six forty. Okay, everyone to a closed session. We have one item of the position, which is for employees to sit at this place, this is the meeting, we're in closed session, five four number seven, and six forty, we're going to have a closed session.
Okay, um, I mean, a closed session, uh, reported on a closed session, there's no report of action taken on closed session. We're now going to a discussion of petition action items. Item number one, emergency ordinance for the city of Livingston making finance establishment a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of smoke shops and smoking lounges. Your comments, please.
As mayor, members of the council, before you is an urgency ordinance. Uh, it's a moratorium, and it's a moratorium on smoke shops, smoke lounges, and other establishments similar to their definition in the, in the ordinance. Before I get specifically to the ordinance and what it says, and if you want to talk a little bit about it, what a moratorium is, uh, the law, the government code allows, and specifically section six, five, eight, five, eight, allows city councils to adopt moratoria when there is a threat to public health and safety, uh, and they need to stop a use. For example, in this case, a use is coming in, there's a business license, we received business license applications for actually two smoke shops in a area in just a few weeks, and both in the downtown commercial. At that point, you, what you do at a staff level is you look at your shirt, your coat, and you say, "What does our code say about these type of establishments? Do we have any rules in place for these types of establishments?" The planning department looked at our code, the police department was when they received this business license application, and they went, the chief was concerned about it, talked to planning, looked at the city's code, there are no specific regulations for smoke shops. Meaning that there's no regulation about distance, there's no regulation about specifically, you know, where, where do you want them? There are, as the staff report mentions, they're usually allowed, or they would be allowed, in your commercial zones, C1, C2, C3, and your downtown commercial area. Where this becomes problematic is there's a vision, there's a vision that the council has, and there's a vision that all cities have, and whatever that vision is, there's sometimes certain uses that make you don't want certain places. For example, there's uses such as smoke shops, or, uh, sometimes you have other cities that other places like massage parlors, marijuana dispensaries possibly, that you don't want certain, certain places, like maybe near schools. I know that's a big one, you know, near schools, so if a school is, let's say, downtown, you wouldn't want a smoke shop right next to it, at least many councils wouldn't want a smoke shop right next to it, because that's not a division of where they want their city to go. One of the big issues here is that the two applications were in the downtown commercial area, and the staff report explains that, and so does the, the ordinance. So like I was saying, it went to staff, staff mentioned, "We don't have any regulations," and that's why there's a moratorium in front of you. What the moratorium does is it allows staff to reject these applications, where it would without this, allow those two uses to come in if they complied with all the codes, which, like I just said, there's, there's, there's not many in our zoning code. It almost puts a timeout on that use. Now, the moratorium is only for 45 days, it's temporary. The law does however allow you to extend the moratorium, uh, for, well, two additional times. The first time, you can extend it for 10 months and 15 days, and when that, when that's expired, you can extend it for, for a year. Total moratorium is for two years. Something important to point out is that, you know, it sounds, it sounds unreasonable, you can always just keep doing a moratorium on a use, uh, and stop it forever, but that's, that's not the case. The law does prohibit that. The law only allows you to do a moratorium on certain use one time, and you can only do it again on that use if there are changed circumstances. Specifically, if we get into the ordinance, so again, a moratorium stops the use from coming in, we're specifically talking about smoke shops. And the urgency ordinance, something to point out, is the urgency ordinance goes ahead and lays out a lot of the findings of, again, as I mentioned, it needs to be a, it needs to be a danger to the public health, safety, and welfare. In this case, the danger for the, the, the emergency is laid out in the findings in the actual ordinance itself. It points it to, obviously, you know, starting off with, um, with children and with schools, it has been reported in many jurisdictions that establishments like these, and I'm not saying, and in no way does it say anything about the two applications we received or the business owners that have applied, but it has been documented in other jurisdictions that these types of establishments do make it easy, or easier, or make it a possibility for children to get their hands on possibly either tobacco products or actual paraphernalia, tobacco paraphernalia, which is usually used also for other uses such as marijuana. That, start off with that finding, because that's usually the most compelling, uh, given, given location and given the use. The other real reason also is economic growth. You want to attract and retain businesses, that's one of the things that you do want to do, you want to bring businesses to your city. I'm not gonna say right or wrong businesses, you know, that's the council's decision, but it is also shown that if you accumulate certain businesses in an area, certain businesses that other cities have, have categorized as, as more sensitive businesses like massage parlors, tattoo parlors, uh, smoke shops, um, you start getting that feel of kind of like the skid row, if everything is connected to each other. This tool, the moratorium, has been used as a way to prevent something like that, because if it's, if they're all coming in at once, it puts a stop to it, or at least it puts them on hold, but it's not forever. It only puts them on hold so the council, so the city can study the issue and bring back proper regulations on these businesses. When I say proper regulations, as far as smoke shops go, something that's very commonly used is distance requirements. They can't be within, let's say, 100 yards from each other. They can't be within 100 yards from a school. Um, they can't be, if you don't want it in your downtown commercial, because that's, you would like other types of shops there, then you would preclude them from that zone. So it's locations edition. The, I know you all have seen the definition, which is important, the definition of the, the establishments that we're trying to, to, the smoke shop definition. The definition's pretty broad. It includes smoke shops means a business establishment that is dedicated in whole parts to the smoking of tobacco or other substances, including but not limited to establishment known, uh, variously as cigar lounges, hookah cafes, uh, tobacco clubs, tobacco bars, et cetera. So it also covers lounges as well as establishments. The establishments are not just, "You sell tobacco, or you sell these products, and you're not allowed here." There is an exception in the definition, because you don't want to stop your bigger shops, you don't want to stop your supermarkets from coming in just because they sell tobacco products. Their, the definition itself, in order to qualify under this definition, uh, the smoke shop is defined as a retail establishment that devotes 15% or more of its total floor space to products intended or, or designed for use in ingesting, inhaling, or otherwise introducing tobacco or controlled substances into human body, including but not limited to tobacco products, smoking oils, et cetera, et cetera. What's important there is the 15%. We're not talking about a gas station opening up, or a supermarket opening up that has a section, uh, that they sell tobacco products. It has to be, uh, more than 15%. A big supermarket's not gonna devote more than 15% of their floor space for tobacco products. So that is, that is key, and that's usually one of the questions that we get, "Wait a minute, what if we get a good business that has, that sells cigarettes? Would that one still be fine?" One thing, uh, last thing I'd like to point out is the ordinance does require a four-fifths vote of the council, that means four out of the five council members can vote for it, if this is something that the council wants, it takes four fifths votes to pass, and it takes effect immediately. I mentioned extensions. The extension would need to be done before the 45 days are up, in order for the extension to, to continue, for the moratorium to continue. The next, the extension, as you know, we did not have a public hearing notice for this initially. The law doesn't require a public hearing notice for the 45 days, but it does require a public hearing notice for an extension, and it has to happen before the 45 days. So if the council adopts this tonight, planning staff will continue to work on the item, will try to bring up an ordinance, an ordinance that the zoning code requires it to go to the planning commission, and then come to council with the holidays. I don't see how we get around with, without extending it. Just one, do you want to give a heads up? For that, mayor, the council have any questions?
I think, um, excuse me. Any comments before we go to the vote?
Do you need a fourth vote in order to extend it also, or?
Yes.
Would be four people.
Yes.
We're gonna go ahead and vote about seven, ten.
Has it been recorded? Because I didn't even hear. Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Hello? No? Hello, Chris Mann?
I'm in over here.
Can, can, oh, you, here.
Just go ahead and speak on the other.
Hello? Hello? Okay, Mike's Berry, 1328 First Street. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, I have no affiliation to this smoke shop, okay? I have no clue who the hell they are. Who the heck they are. Um, I'm just speaking as a local business owner that's trying to support Livingston. Um, a few things I'd like to say is, uh, one, the business owners, or potential business owners are not here tonight. That sucks, because it would be really nice to have them up here to say anything, all right? And that's always been a problem with businesses coming in here. Most of them don't show up when critical things like this are happening, so shame on whoever they are. Second of all, I'd like to say, did we contact them and let them know? Because they might not be local Livingston residents. Okay?
Will you contact them?
If I may, the, the chief did contact them, called a potential moratorium, and only they, and supported the chief. They just, the chief's not here, uh, they did say, "We understand, let us know what happens."
Okay, okay. I, you know, I, when you hear directly from a business owner, potential business owner, or a potential investor personally, you know, it kind of adds, adds a little bit more to things, where you guys can ask a question, "Well, what do you want to do?" Because you know what, there is a big difference between a cigar lounge, a hookah lounge, and a cigar hangout, or cigarette hangout, okay? And a lot of them has to do with the, the age levels and so forth. You know, I don't know a lot of guys, 21, smoking cigars, as they are, hookah, hookahs are a popular thing, but hey, shame on them, they're not here. I honestly think your guys' moratorium, that whole power thing of a moratorium needs to be flushed. Make a decision. Guaranteed, those people have looked into this idea, who knows, maybe they want another one somewhere else, okay? They are regulated by somebody more powerful than us, ATF, okay? So if they're doing something wrong, you know, age limits and things like that, you know, and I'd really like to, uh, stress something that you said, Jose, um, that I do not believe in. You said that children are more at risk at a place like that? No. That place is designed for that. You don't go to a car wash for an oil change. Miners aren't allowed in there, there's no reason for them to be in there. So that trumps that whole concept. I'm sorry. I, I see kids hanging out at all these different places, more for alcohol, but tobacco, hey, still one from your mom or dad, they're not gonna notice, this is the way it is. They're gonna get it, but they're not gonna get it at a place that specializes in it. And so on, three minutes, but anyways, guys, give them a chance.
And just to provide some detail about the comment about the miners, it's not just the tobacco, grocery stores sell tobacco, um, what other jurisdictions, and I wish the chief was here, because he could probably, um, speak to what other chiefs have said, is also the other items that are tobacco or related, such as the pipes, the bongs, and hookahs, that those are now accessible, which, a pipe is now accessible, a pipe can be used for tobacco or other i, other purposes, such as marijuana. That is what some of these jurisdictions, and I've, I've done the, this type of moratorium for several cities, that's what usually the concern is, and that's what the police's concern is. It's, it's not the tobacco itself sometimes, it's more of the actual accessories.
And that's what my point is, when I was gonna say to Mike and, uh, you know, Catherine, uh, you know, she's a, a school teacher, I think, and, uh, you're a Livingston resident. I don't think you want, you know, we're all concerned about the Livingston residents, we love Livingston, but I don't think you want pipes to be accessible to the kids either. You know, I, we understand, you know, cigars, uh, cigarettes, it's not a problem, that when you make those pipes, there is, you know, mostly when people take those pipes, it's crank, you know, that we, we want to get rid of, of, of that, you know, um, which has been pretty, you know, like I said, marijuana is, is accessible to a lot of people now, and, uh, you know, that, that's not as bad as, as really the crystal, the, all that stuff, methamphetamine that comes with all that stuff, and, and when, when kids and when anybody sees those pipes, all kinds of pipes, they paint them all different colors, but still, you know, they go, you go, you go to the flea market, that, that are pretty accessible over there.
Yeah.
That's a turn up, but here, Livingston, we're a small town, you know, uh, you know, I feel like, small town, we, we take care of our own, and we're not trying to curtail the businesses, or encourage the businesses, just like you already said, but, but, you know, you always say that, that we're trying to, uh, push businesses away, we're not. We're trying to, you know, bring more business in town, but not that, not that type of business, if they're cigars and cigarettes only, hey, in my mind, you're welcome, but not with all those, uh, extra accessories that come with it.
Do, but do we, no, I'm sorry, do, do we know if, what kind of business they're actually trying to bring in?
Oh, they, they, they're showing us pictures of all pipes. They submitted an application with all of those crank pipes that, you know, to me, they look like crank pipes. It's all glass, okay, like, pictures, but that's what they submitted, we have in, you know, in front of us.
And we, we do have a problem here in, in this town with drugs, we do. We do.
Yeah, okay. Well, like I said, I don't want to be bad for them for that.
Sorry.
I actually wanted to make, make sure they, that's what they presented, and, and that's what I'm basing my opinion on, you know, with the moratorium, because that's bad for Livingston, in my opinion. Uh, councilman? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, me again. Couldn't many of your concerns be addressed by setting an age limit to the establishment as part of a conditional use permit? The reason I'm asking this question is because what is your real intent with this moratorium? Is your intent to make these guys go away and hope others go away again and not challenge you legally in the future? Or is your intent to say, "Okay, we're going to have to deal with this. We're going to have to create a fix that is going to make business happy and make residents happy." My concern is, is you're going to adopt the moratorium and kind of hope it all goes away, and not have to deal with it in the future. If you are going to adopt this moratorium, I expect you to get on it and draft whatever changes to the code, whatever conditional use permit conditions you need, so that a business like this, that if they really wanted to, could come in, establish itself, and like Mike said, tobacco is highly regulated, and we end up not being on the back end of a lawsuit, because you are in effect prohibiting a certain type of business. Because I'm afraid if you're not careful, that's where you could be.
Thank you.
Uh, to provide just kind of, you know, when you hear a lawsuit, um, a moratorium is well founded in the law, it's in the government code, there's a whole section regarding a moratorium, and the city's ability to, to adopt a moratorium. The moratorium does not allow you just to forget about something and just ban it forever. There, it's a temporary moratorium, it's only 45 days, again, it has to be extended. I can tell you that the purpose of the moratorium as drafted is, as it states in the moratorium, it's, it is for the city to study the issue and to adopt whatever regulations that, again, the council decides what regulations it wants to adopt in these types of businesses. A lot of times, it is distance requirements, distance requirements from, from uses of the schools, uh, there's also the option of the ability to say, "Not in this zone." So downtown is a problem, so downtown is an issue, that you see your downtown as having different types of shops. Then a lot of times, it's just taking the downtown commercial zone out of it. If the, as you saw, we got, and as the report says, we received two different applications for the same use in the downtown commercial area. Maybe it's, wow, you know, now they're coming there and, you know, they do, they study the market, they know what it's gonna sell, and maybe they did do, do a great study, but now two of them are coming in, I don't know how close they are to each other, and maybe it's also a distance requirement, you don't want a lot of smoke shops stacked up next to each other. But that's, those are the types of choices and the types of different regulations that I would be more comfortable with, if directed by council, if the council does adopt this, in order to bring back, or take to the planning commission options, and in order to bring back to the council, uh, a possible ordinance, uh, regulating these, these, these establishments. And again, we're looking at location, we're looking at, at business requirements, things like that, that are very well established in other, in other cities as well.
Let me close this, this is, I just wanted to make sure, um, council, any more comments?
I just want to make a comment, uh, my 20-plus years of law enforcement, I never encountered anyone that used glass pipes for smoking tobacco, it was either marijuana, meth, and It was either marijuana, methamphetamines, heroin, and most of the time that I spoke to kids, it's, "Why do you have a pipe? Because it's cool, it looks nice." These pipes are designed and shaped and farmed to attract kids. And I coach kids, and I coach youth football, um, now, the, the youth is, uh, our future, and I don't want to, um, endorse something that's going to say to the kids, "Hey, our coach, our councilman endorses," um, stuff like this, so it must be okay to go ahead and do it. So, that's my comment. These pipes are designed to attract kids, and if it's something that I can keep kids from doing, then I'll follow it.
Hello?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for me, I think we'd have this conversation slightly different. When we have the ordinance to, uh, add, uh, additional fees and license for tobacco, and I think the majority of council says, "No, you know, those are the general business, business friendly." God, I find the concern is that they're selling tobacco. I think the concern is the intent of, yeah, you can say, "Yeah, this one's for tobacco," but come on. Let's face it, everybody knows what the intent of the pipes are. At least, uh, you know, I don't, I bet you too many people are smoking tobacco and those pipes. We are. Uh, and this is another case of, uh, guarding behind the slow reactive thing, and unfortunately, when they shows up and we need to do that. Now, I don't think we can really stop it, because like we mentioned earlier, there's some of the free market in my head. Uh, and, but you know, but we gotta have some controls, otherwise, you could literally, right now, the way it is, every shop could be a smoke shop. Um, not, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want my kids, I wouldn't want to see my kids in there. In fact, if they're working, I don't care if I get in trouble, they're going to get smacked across the head, "What are you doing in this shop?" And I don't want you in this shop. But actually, I think most of us would be there and saving the action. But I, I think we need to give staff time to come up with some sort of a solution and solve our waters, distance away from schools, you know, maybe put away from downtown. And we're, we've been trying to make this a, say downtown's more of a family type thing, and, and we wouldn't want adult entertainment anymore than we want these. Now, I know I've got the same thing, you know, but. But to me, uh, I know it's kind of illegal, but I think we need to have some sort of, uh, controls. And like Mr. Councilman Soria said, his standing in the community as an elective official and as a coach reflects what the, the youth see and doing. If he endorses it, there's, they're looking at this endorsement saying, "Well, you know, they're doing it. I'm a parent." And I wouldn't want to endorse it that way and say to my kids, "You know, I said it's okay, but now I want you in the store." You know, so I think we need to have some better controls than that, so. Based on that, I think we need to at least give staff time to come up with a solution. If what they come back is not what we're looking at, you can hash it out, wipe it out, change it. What we need to do, what we're planning, and came at that level, at least have an open and honest discussion about it. And I agree, we're not going to do this forty-five days, but I don't want this to be in one year or two year. I can go forty-five days, and maybe another forty-five day because of holidays and everything else, and that's a little penny. But I'm not sure, I'm not, much more beyond that. Okay? Okay?
I just, I just want to add to.
Go ahead.
Mr. Severance, councilman. It's not that we're pushing them out, but to go back to the council. Uh, we don't want to push them out, we just want to make sure that we make the decision, and I think we're all okay with that decision, if we did, yeah, your name, I guess, it's, it's more of a, how we feel, or basically. If, if, if it's going to be downtown, then let's adopt the proper, the proper conditions, whatever they want to do, or if it's going to be in orange, and I just say, I go back, and it's more the time that, that, that we want on that staff, and so we can make a wider decision as well.
Okay. No more comments, or, like, any questions? I make a motion to, uh, adopt the, uh, urgency, uh, ordinance. I'm sure what the number is. Adopt urgency ordinance. Making a finding and establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of smoke shops and smoking lounges to become effective immediately. Motion by Councilman Soria, there's second. I second. By, uh, Councilman Mr. Carlos, uh, no comments? Is that?
I designed to. Sorry, I was writing down. Okay. Councilmember Soria?
Yes.
Councilmember Samra?
Normally I get contact, I'm glad that I said yes. I'm going to have to tell you a repeat, so.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Mr. Carlos?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, David Madusa?
No.
Mayor, uh, Mr. Madusa?
Yes.
Okay, uh, passage on the, on the four to one rule, so the, uh, urgency ordinance passes.
Okay. Thank you, and that concludes our meeting tonight. Y'all, goodbye.